Call the meeting to order. First, our business public comment. If you have a comment, please come to the podium. Send your name and address. Let your comments to three minutes and address your comments to the board and not to the public. Anybody interested? No. Okay. I'm number two, uh, three, excuse me. Buddy Mike, Steve Bulling, who's just asleep in the back row. Almost.
So we did the, we finished the paving contract. If the price had stayed the same, it would have been one hundred ninety-three thousand. So we would have been three thousand over the regular budget. We got hit with a five thousand dollar escalation, which is because the AC price went up for June, considering when they bid it for May, which is still cheaper because it went up even more for July. So paving in June, we probably saved like another eight thousand on the price. It went really good this year. Probably the easiest is going since I've been here. Cornell ground every single driveway that was paved along the road. So with zero driveway complaints for the first time in a while. And they're the best organized that we've seen. And every year I always get asked, and I always say, no. Well, this is me, the first year I ask because it's not a bad idea. But they took, instead of going out to bid again next year, extend the contract for another year. And we're protected in it because there's de-escalation in the contract for the AC price too. So I know that Wynn and Derry, Manchester, I'll do it with them. A bunch of towns extend contracts with people if they find what they like. This was a company that was hoping bid for the past three years, and they never did. And they finally bid again. So it's entirely up to you guys, but.
Are we breaking into our own policies by, because it's a significant amount?
You have a, obviously spending thresholds for purchase, but you also have a clause in there that you reserve the right to waive your own rule purchase policy.
Yes.
And it's not like they're not, we haven't bid every year for many, many years. It's not like it's uninformed decision. So that's something that we, to have it goes smoothly, impactful, happy, it's great.
About that?
Yeah, I know. I mean, he seems happy.
So.
I asked you first. They didn't approach me this year to do it. They bring it up like casually and passing when they talk, and I usually just blow them off.
Sounds like we're interested, so pursue it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. Thanks.
Scott Nimitt?
Could I, Mr. Chair, quickly say a couple of things?
Before Scott talks?
Before Scott talks.
Okay, Scott, can sit down or?
No, that could be very long, but I had Denise bring forward a fire department wage schedule, and the board had asked me for that meeting or two before that. And essentially what I did was take Scott's wage and stuff schedule and cost it out for the years one, three, five, eight, nine, and 10. And that piece of paper that Denise presented and that Jeff and Porto was not familiar with was just my, if things stayed the same and those increases happened in those years, this is what you'd like, be likely to see. And that assumed, it doesn't include the chief, and it assumes that all positions were full, which has not necessarily been the case ever, but.
This, you're talking about this?
Yes.
So in terms of the budget against this, so I guess I'm looking for what's the difference? And I know we don't have budgets for future years, but for 2022, I did this, it's three hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars. But what's the budget for those line items for those?
Okay, I didn't bring individual budget items. For last year's budget, we made that change mid-year. We've done it a full year, would have added about forty-two thousand dollars over and above what had been budgeted for wages.
Just for the fire department?
Just for the fire department, yeah.
That's just about what the ten-year increase is.
And if that was last year's numbers, a lot of the personnel got a bigger percentage.
Anything else to you?
No, I just wanted to give some reference to that sheet coming up before you last week.
Are they chief? Now you're up.
I'm just here to answer any questions. I watched the meeting from July 11th, and I saw that there was a couple.
So I guess my question here, so the 2022 year, which is the year that just ended, is this fiscal year? So this number does not reflect what we actually spent last year? So I, or is this the current salaries?
That would, that would be what it was in year one for a full year, based on the increases that we, when we adopted the program.
Had it been all year?
And it, they were pretty significant increases. They ranged from two dollars and twenty-five cents to six dollars. Excellent high was seven dollars and forty-seven cents for increases that we adopted.
So we've already agreed to those numbers?
For two years.
Two column, but they already happened. Okay, so what we're really looking at is going forward. We're looking at increase in two years of twenty.
Nine, nine thousand?
Yeah, but, okay. Sorry, I was looking at something. Half of nine thousand. Just sure if you're aware of that. One doesn't come, sorry.
And there are some things that are changed that I know, like this year, I think you had substantially more overtime costs than you had budgeted for. I think that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that speaks to when we, or down a person or two and have to plug stuff in.
So this is really just if we have this step program, what that would do going forward? Does this give people, like people who have already been here for five years, are they in year five of the step program?
So, yes and no. I had to go through the whole department and kind of look at where we were at with everybody. And so a lot of our full-timers, because we just hired them, they're only in year, they either started in probationary or year one. But yes, there are people that have been on the department for forty-something years. So they're in step 10 already.
You came on, these were the steps they started.
Oh, okay.
Probationary, and these were the rate increases that we used.
And these ones, and you gave, and this was.
Those were awarded when we started the.
So this is all these stuff, this data, and then increase, a percentage increase in one, three, five, eight, nine, and 10?
Yep. And the reason, the reason why I did one, three, five, eight, we do have a lot of people that leave within the first couple of years. So to protect the town, I did it. So we missed a year over year. But then also on the other side, for longevity, so that they get steps in the E, nine, and 10, because they've been here longer and they're giving the town, you know, those years. By doing the two years that the board chose to do, a lot of the members are in that year one. So technically, yes, the step program was agreed to in two years, but they'll only get a two percent increase for one, one year because they're already in year one.
But that is, they get more training and they move up in other ways, correct? So if you get more.
Potentially, yep.
They have the option to increase their pay.
Yep, we do have the crew chief position, we have lieutenant's position. So they're gonna get, they're gonna take a test or go to the academy and get some certifications, and then they can bump up and pay that way also.
Any questions?
So there's, so there's no cost of living increase? There's none of that stuff or just, it would just be the step program?
Correct, so.
They don't get a raise now for two years at all? Being sure.
Unless the board don't work.
Yeah, you could decide that there was a 10% increase in whatever, cost of living. Right, and so that's different, and you could reward that, but they have a guarantee.
So my biggest thing is looking at those departments that we're up against. What are the, you know, they're going to union departments, Dover, Durham, Rochester's, that all have contracts. Most of those contracts are good for three to five years, depending on the department. And within that contract, they have a step program for the firefighters that we're working on right now. But then they also get COLA that's within their contract. So there's a area department that July 1st, if you were hired July 1st, you get a 2% merit increase for the step program. And then you get 2% COLA on top of that. So they're getting 4% right off the bat. And the board did agree to the step programs. A lot of our personnel did get pay increases with the study. But now there's nothing after that.
And one of the historical challenges is that when we come up against a budget and they want to cut money, it's often, we're not going to give raises this year. And that's been historically an unmotivating way of going forward. So it gives them a little bit of certainty that there'll be something increasing.
Now, I totally heard the whole, all the town employees getting that. I'm just working for the fire department, trying to get our members this. But that's been the case, and we've discussed this before. Some people get a $250 bonus, some people get $500 bonus. I think it was last year, the board allowed us to take the bonus money and hand it out to our employees how we wanted to. Other years, we've gone 1%, nothing. So I'm just trying to give the members something to look forward to because if somebody goes to any of these other departments, they know in 15 years what they're going to make at that department because it's only going to go up from there because they renew the contracts every three to five years.
Okay.
What happens after year 10?
They stay at year 10.
So they get nothing after that?
Correct. And that's, that's totally up to the board. This is just what I was presenting. I looked at the area departments to see what they had for step programs. It's all over the mountain. Some go all the way up to 20, some only go to 50, some go to 10, some do one right through 10, some jump around. I mean, it's, it's all over the place.
We have, it looks like one person at 10? Other than you? I mean, excluding you?
Yeah, salary, none in that mix.
Right. Looks like there's just one person that would affect in the immediate future.
So could we, can we go ahead and pass this now and then suggest a future plan for the 10 through 20 year?
Well, the issue that I have with all this, one, I've always said, treat all employees the same. So if we do something like this for the fire department, you need to consider it for the rest of the particular employees. The other problem is, we've got a salary issue that we need to deal with this particular budget year. So that's going to not be very nice because we gave out an awful lot of increases to key people. And this is even worse than that in terms of even more money we have to fund. That's my particular problem. It's not going to be nice.
I don't think that there's anything that we do as a town that's more important than employees though. So I feel like one thing that hasn't been particularly nice in the past was using the salaries of the employees, not increasing those as a way to change the budget. So this, for me, it feels like at least it's a, it's a written agreement that we will continue to go with the cost of living and those increases. That's a responsibility for us.
That, that sounds nice, but the problem is, when this board changes next March potentially, we can change whatever we want. This particular vote doesn't hold any future boards to the same agreement. There's no contract per se.
Right, but I do think that once it's installed and it's become common, it's a lot harder to do.
You know it's not. I've been here long enough, you know it's not. So that's my particular issue with this. I don't know how the town is going to deal with the budget issue we have now with salaries, let alone this on top of that. That's not tons of money. It's like nine thousand dollars each year. So it's not bad, but the thing is, that's just for the fire department.
Not even each year because it's only from 2024.
It's 4500 a year.
Yeah. So that's not a huge increase to give somebody some comfort and knowledge that they will have something different on the airhead.
Yeah, but that's just for the fire department.
You gotta start somewhere.
So it might be $4,500 in the first couple of years per year, but you, fire department is only, what, six, five people? You've got more than that in terms of other employees in this town, so.
We have 21 people.
Yeah, I'm like, what are you talking about?
So it'd affect everyone in the department?
Well, I'm talking full-time people, so.
Four.
It's four. So we have four. Police departments get nine. Transfer station has one, plus the high volatility, public works, four, five in there. So it's more than $4,500. That's my particular issue, so.
I just think that we are dealing with a situation where there's people leaving and it's hard and hard to find them. And I understand, this is a very small.
No, I understand that. But the thing is, why are they leaving? They're leaving for more money? This is not going to give them, how much can a firefighter work in Durham? Seventy thousand with overtime? There's no way that we're going to defeat them.
And we don't need to agree with them. We just need to have a contract where we say that we see that the cost of living increases.
But they're leaving for more money.
But it's not only for money. It's about, it's about being treated fairly in the year that goes ahead, saying, we do see you and we will, you know, we're increasing this. It doesn't have to be apples to apples. It's just, it's a way of, it's, I've been in situations where we didn't get a raise that year, and that's a really frustrating experience. Like I'm doing, you know, more work, I've learned more, and I'm not being recognized for that. And so it worries me that we so frequently didn't offer any raises at all. So to me, this is a very small way to say, you know, we're going to hold ourselves to this commitment and.
Well, on the other side, it's taxpayer.
Right, and the taxpayer, also the world's where the prices are.
That's how you have to balance those particularly. As many people have not got a raise out there either, so. I understand where you're coming from.
There's very few years that, in our feeling, have had no raises at all. And if a slight amount can make a big difference.
That's great. That's great for the, your particular family. Many families have it, so.
Right, and that's a, that's a cost on them. I just, I just think that.
What do you mean, it's a cost on them?
Well, if, if you're, there's very many people that have different experiences, of course. But when you're in a position where the cost of living increases and your salary doesn't, you're actually making less money the following.
Yes.
And so that's a really unfair way to treat someone, I think.
But we have no control for those people who they work for. So, but that's the reality for them, so.
We also know that when we lose people, it costs us a lot of money to train new people.
I understand that. I understand that, but there's no way we can compete with the Durums and the Dovers and.
I'm not trying to compete with them.
Well, why are they leaving then? Why are they leaving? Do you know in terms of why your staff left?
The last three wanted the ambulance. We don't have one. They wanted a busier department. And the ones that I talked to that left the furthest along, left because they wanted stability within the department in their pace column. They didn't find that here.
Okay. So I can't help them with the ambulance?
Correct.
I can't help them with the busyness. I go out and create lots of accidents, but I don't think that's going to make anybody happy, so.
There's one way we can solve that.
Yeah, I would just throw out there, and I've talked a little bit with Scott about this, but obviously you're not planning for an ambulance in this budget cycle, but the ambulance can be a significant source of revenue, particularly if you're on two-state highways. Neighboring towns on Route 4 that have their own ambulances, some of them smaller than Lee, make a significant portion of their fire budget via the ambulance.
Never thought of it that way.
No, it's not a pleasant way to think about it, but the way insurance companies work and the way ambulance is work, having your own ambulance can make a big deal in revenue. At this time, with the board, there's been some discussion about the town, the police department, that sort of thing. Is the board interested in trying to plug numbers into the MRI report for the employees we have? I'm not sure how easy this would be, but I could use the percentages that Scott used in his table for the fire department, for the police department. I'd have to just sit down with the chief and determine where he thinks people will belong, step and wage-wise, but if there's interest, I can attempt to do that. If there's not, I'm happy to attempt not to do it.
And we could vote on this tonight, just for the fire department, is what you're saying? Or we could continue that?
Well, you've got, the fire department is in place. I don't know what you'd be voting on, if you want to extend it past two years or. And I don't know if you're interested in seeing a similar table for the police department or, as I said, you paid MRI to develop it. They didn't put numbers in, but they put the wage steps and scale together. And I would likely plug numbers into that if you wanted to see it.
Personally, I want to see how bad the salaries that we already given are going to affect the budget point on, because that number is going to be significant. With the benefits associated with it. So I'm, I'm not interested in moving anything on this right at the moment. If you two ladies would like to, that's your prerogative, but I would not support it.
And I will certainly distribute the, we should be, we've got a few more things coming in, but the budget is just about closed. I will get together with Joanne and do the salary increase. It's pretty easy to see in the budget to actualize that last week. You can see how far we're over, particularly in some of the fire and police lines, but I'll run the ancillary costs for that as well and give you a report.
And if you can give us the annualized number or whatever that is?
Yep.
He doesn't let me drink anything to do with this right now. Am I missing it?
You've, you've got the, you've got the fire wage schedule in place right now. You approved it in?
Last.
2022, I think.
Right, but you can't use it to tell anyone and.
Right, well, it's only good for two years.
It's not a, it's not a thing you can use in attracting anyone.
It seems to me that especially in fire, police, teachers, this is how salaries run.
Which is fine, but I want to know how much our other overages are going to be. And even if you do this for the fire department, even if I was supportive of this, I would want to see it for the rest of the staff too because you need to treat them all the same. You can't be, I don't want to say favoritism, but this is something more than they're getting now.
Okay, can we see that data?
Yes, absolutely. And as I said, you can get a pretty good picture of it. The ancillary costs won't stand out easily, but if you look at the salary lines for PD and fire department on that last budget to actual, there's some numbers in parentheses that are going to jump right out together. But I will put that in board form with the other expenses associated and protection for this budget year.
And we have any movement on the fixing their pay?
We have not. The email that I sent to the board, Scott has a very definite idea of how things should work. Both Scott and I have found evidence that what Scott would like to do is what is the heart of most of the union contracts in New Hampshire. And I have three legal opinions saying that they don't think that's a good idea. I sent you the highlights. I have not heard back from the auditor yet. I suspect he's going to tell me to call town council, but.
So in terms of that particular issue, is a way to solve this? Because as far as I understand it, it's the whole how they get paid. If we switch to paying the fire department on a monthly basis, would that change anything? No? Because it would be in the same pay period.
It would work.
That would make you more.
Yes, and they wouldn't get their overtime until the end of the month. I think if you, if you had them one paycheck.
Yeah, and Scott's thought on this is that possibly the attorneys are confusing the eight-week scheduling timeframe with the eight-week, you know, confusing that as saying that it's an eight-week work requirement when in effect it's just a scheduling framework.
So I think we talked about this before. So Dover does this, right?
Dover, Durham, Rochester.
So I think we talked about this, and maybe you can do this. Talk to Selig or, I don't remember, the Dover city manager. How do they get away with this? If it's supposedly, if you're being told this illegal, how can they do it?
The problem. So.
The problem that I'm finding, I've tried to reach out to the union. I've tried to reach out to people that I know to try and get an answer. It's been in the contracts for so long, nobody understands how they can do it, but they can do it.
That's what Naomi basically said to me as well. She said, this has been going on for years. She said, I've never agreed with it. She said, and she also said, probably nothing would happen to you if you adopted it. She said, you know, somebody would need to file an FLSA claim against you for not doing this properly. She said, it's, it's hard to imagine how that would happen. She said, but as your attorney, I'm here to tell you that it could happen, and you would be on the wrong side of things, so.
And we'd have to stop doing it?
I know.
The person would be suing for money that they didn't get.
If, if they could somehow prove that. She said, the only way you would write a foul of this is if an employee, you know, filed a complaint or.
And that they weren't getting the money they were supposed to get.
Then we could show that they had gotten the money they were supposed to get, so then we wouldn't really be in.
So I took a 40-hour FLSA class to try and figure this out. He told me this after I was trying to doubly answer his question today.
I'm sorry.
There's two firefighters that are both lawyers out of, one's out of Rhode Island, one's out of Massachusetts, and put on all these classes. I reached out to them. He tried to help, but he's not licensed in New Hampshire. So he's like, I can't really give you advice. I took his class to try and see if I could figure this out a little bit more. With FLSA, you cannot make it any worse than FLSA. You can make it better. And that's what I got out of the class, was that all these contracts make it better for employees. Because when you do the work period, seven days, we don't have to pay overtime for firefighters until 53 hours. So anything below the 53 hours, which we're trying to do 42, would make it better for employees. And that's why I've been trying to fight. The whole contract thing, I can't find anybody that could tell me why it's allowed, but it is. Because like you guys are thinking as well, you have all these big cities where both lawyers on both sides have said that it's okay. So I don't understand, and that's what I'm frustrated by is we keep talking to all these lawyers and everybody keeps going against it, and they just don't know why.
Can we just do it?
I don't know. I think I say, can we just, when we hire somebody, explain them what it is and they sign off so they acknowledge how it is? That should cover us, and let's just do it.
Nice job.
Denise has already suggested.
That's just, he had a good.
I'm willing to take this risk.
So if you create a form, if you create a form that explains what the thing, what the process is, and they sign off on it, how can they come back and say, no?
I guess if it's truly against FLSA regulation, though, you're effectively putting in writing that we're violating the law. We know it.
So I say, don't do that. And you just realize that we've done the best, and you can, we can show all the work we've done in trying to figure this out, and that showing that there's other places that do it, and that we don't, it doesn't make sense, and that legislatively makes sense.
Scott is absolutely right. Every, every CBA for the state is online, one website. You can read every union contract, and virtually all of them use this.
And that was my thing. I took word for word what those contracts said to explain it. So my thought was putting in, we don't have contracts from unions, but put it in the town personnel policy.
So does this, does this, if we were to change this, does this make working for your department more desirable, or does it change it normal?
Right.
Well, my biggest thing right now is that some of these guys, when they get their paycheck, one week they're working 48 hours, the next week they get a short week and they're getting paid 24. So this part of the month, they're getting paid 71 hours. But then the next week, they're getting 96 hours because of that work schedule. So this just, it almost makes them salary. Where every week they're going to get a 42-hour, it'd be 84 because of the bi-weekly paychecks. But they'd get a constant paycheck like everybody else versus, I mean, I did payroll today, and the numbers that I saw for the full-timers were all over the place. And that's, yeah, how do you pay a mortgage and your car payment and all these other bills when you're trying to align everything with your higher paycheck so you can pay for certain things? And that's all, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it normal.
So what do you need from us to just do this?
Yeah, let's do this.
I just, a motion to adopt the work week that the fire chief has recommended. And I've already spoken with Joanne. I can.
Is everyone?
I've got a full paragraph here. I can read into a motion.
So.
You can make it if you'd like. I, I move that normal hours of work for all full-time firefighters slash EMTs shall be a work week schedule consisting of one 24-hour work day, followed by two consecutive 24-hour days off, followed by one 24-hour work day, followed by four consecutive 24-hour days off, averaged over an eight-week cycle, to be an average of 42, 42 hours per week. Work days shall commence at 0700 hours and end at 0700 hours the following morning. With regard to overtime, any full-time firefighter slash EMTs required to work more than the average of 42 hours per week over an eight-week cycle shall be compensated at the rate of one and a half times his regular hourly rate. Paid absences shall be counted in determining whether or not an employee has worked more than an average of 42 hours per week on the eight-week cycle.
Do I have a second?
Is that?
I wrote that out.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, motion trusted. Moving right along.
We did it.
See, Scott, if you would have brought this to us like years ago, we could just.
Oh, my gosh.
Brought it to you in October.
Yeah, and 20 more times since then, so.
I think I said, don't do it in October.
You bet you changed your tune.
And don't provide that to Denise, so she has to write it down.
Yes. We have a big sense of humor.
Regular business.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, not you, Assistant Town Administrator. Oh, no, no, not you, Assistant Town Administrator. I don't want to hear from you. So unless you'd like to...
I'm sorry.
Would you like to yield your time, Assistant Town Administrator?
I would like to.
Okay, there you go.
So thank you.
I'm just going by the agenda, come on.
I appreciate my colleagues yielding.
The gentle lady from...
From Silver's Word. Just in order to be fair, listen to the agenda here. I did get an email and completed the return of premium form from Primex. We get a little over eight thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars back. A lot of that was obviously workers' comp. We had a safe year, and municipalities overall had a relatively safe year. They applied that as a credit, which Joanne is accounting for. Moving on to the annex. I have copies of the annex safety inspection report that was done by Jeff Leporito. The primary things that need to be corrected, and he had mentioned the furnace room door. Both Jeff and Mr. Bullock felt that rather than change the furnace room door, particularly with regard to the air vent that serves the furnace, it would be more appropriate to install a sprinkler head directly over the furnace, which is an acceptable safety measure for that furnace.
Do you have sprinklers in the rest of the building?
We don't have sprinklers, but we do have a cold water pipe directly, water pipe directly over the furnace. Mr. Bullock gave me an estimate of probably around a hundred dollars if Pete Hoyt installs the sprinkler head, and up to five hundred dollars if you had to hire an outside plumber. But he felt that it was likely that Steve could do that. Couple of other things on that report. He flagged ceiling holes around pipe wall openings. That is fairly simple. That can be done with a foam spray-in type thing, most likely for under fifty dollars. And the also, the battery in the exit sign is gone, and I believe that's a Worker WKA five F exit light battery, which retails for somewhere between ten and twelve dollars. If you buy that or some, it's possible that it's a bulb as well, but it's relatively inexpensive too. With regard to the ongoing expenses for the annex building, last year the electrical bill for the annex was three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The Hackworth alarm service for the annex building was three hundred and twenty-four dollars. That's a couple, that's a monitoring fee and the regular fee. The heat is a little more difficult to discern. The LP gas that goes into all of those buildings is complex built, and the complex includes the library, the town hall, the historical museum, and the annex. The bill last year for LP gas for the compound was a little over five thousand dollars in five thousand forty-five. The library reimburses two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars of that to the town, which is taken by finance as a lump sum. I'm not sure how that number was arrived at. It's apparently been kicking around for a little while, and that's what the library plugs in for their heat budget that finance pulls and puts on our side of things. So last year there was a balance of two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars that was used by, figuratively speaking, by the town hall, the historical museum, and the annex. And I'm assuming that the town hall consumed much more of that than the annex, because of the students for library programs throughout the winter. And it's just a larger space to heat.
I'm curious how the library portion of that is calculated?
I believe that some years ago, the former town administrator took the square footage of each of the heated buildings, and that was the library's allocation.
So is it a percentage of the entire bill?
I believe it was, but I don't know that what two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars relates to now, if that had been readjusted or...
Because library is the only place that's been heated the whole time, and the other two have been...
Well, the annex, the annex was heated over this winter.
To fifty-five, though, right now, too?
Fifty-five or sixty, something like that. It was, it was comfortable. I had to go in and dig for signs in February, March.
The other thing, some of the fire department's thing is there's a faceplate.
That's like a two-dollar item.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that was part of the exit sign, and that could be even homemade if needed, but... So the big expense was that furnace room door, and both Jeff Leporito and Mr. Bullock told me that a sprinkler head over the furnace would suffice.
So tanks would be better.
I don't know, Steve, do you think a sprinkler head is better than replacing the door?
The door, it still burns, and the burns are essentially, but the sprinkler actually turns it out, right?
Well, you need a, you need to go one hour, fills a few fire...
The problem isn't really the door. There's a return that they cut into the wall so the air can go from, and so the furnace has, can breathe. They just cut a square in the wall and stuck like a floor grate in it, so this... And that's only on one side. The furnace side, there's nothing, so if there was a fire again, the ceiling and the walls would go right up and come right out. So you have to do the door, and you gotta put a fire rated vent, and so...
So would the sprinkler put the fire out before all this happens? Or do we need to look at that safety issue as well?
The sprinkler I'd be put in is gonna, but I think it'd put it out. All we're gonna do is tap a line off the cold water that goes into the furnace and run it to the ceiling.
What are the people from the fire department feeling about the ideas?
Jeff, Jeff Leporito was fine with that as a, as a plan, but...
Stephen handle, is that what you said? Got it.
Sure.
I figured, okay.
So do you need some money to do this? What do you need?
No, I didn't, I wasn't ever really worried about it, because it was just storage after they moved out. And then all of a sudden, I came back from vacation, and there was a sign on the door that said there was a museum in there now, so I found out I had to do some things.
Going on vacations, right?
So it's not hard, we just have to do it.
Do we have a amount of time that hasn't been done in, or the fire department shuts them down?
I think technically it should have been done before they moved in, but I went in there the other day to look, and they already moved in, so...
But are they open republically already?
Yeah.
Were they supposed to do that before this was addressed?
It's past area seal, I don't know if you can see anything, so...
We should be better in our...
It'll take us a couple hours to put the sprinkler in. The faceplate's not even on an electrical outlet. It's on like a foam line. They have like an old foam jack, so the fit, that's not even, there's no electricity in it. And then like, I knew the, the lights were out for the emergency lights, but no one was using it, and we had other things that we were trying to do on buildings people were in.
So it sounds like you two okay with it?
Yeah, are we just taking it out of his building?
I was just gonna do it out of the building, but it's not gonna be enough money to make it...
Better than work.
Okay.
It's not gonna be enough money to really bear it.
Right, maybe we like talk to the historical society when they were here about splitting it.
That's why I'm asking.
That's what I thought, too. Until these things were done, before they went into the same...
That's what we thought we said.
So I, I'm not participating. I'm just running the meeting that is...
We did say that going forward that we should share the costs fifty-fifty. I just, I think Steve's saying that that's more of a hassle with this small amount.
For this small amount of this.
But going forward, that's the thing we should do.
And I don't know if you, I know there was some mention of the expense of the building, that's why I included the, the three hundred and forty-nine dollars for the past year for electricity and the three hundred and twenty-four dollars, which Hackworth had attributed to that building.
Like, to be honest, most of the copper pipe that we're gonna use to do it, we're gonna take from the transfer station from the scrap that we get and repurpose.
So I'm fine with this going forward, which I think down the road is, that's getting them settled in, and that's fine.
I think the biggest expense is the sprinkler head itself, because we don't actually have a sprinkler head.
Right.
But they're not that much money.
Steve had estimated that would be well under a hundred dollars.
But the bills that come in, huh? Yeah, did we just...
Does Steve get them for his building?
Why did you, why did you discharge the historical society to put the sprinkler in?
Yeah, and then everything else he'll do. That's an interesting idea.
Oh, yeah, that sounds very...
And then if you want a really fancy sprinkler head, they can buy one.
Gold-plated sprinkler head?
These are sprinkler heads with wax coating.
Can we make a historic sprinkler head?
A historic sprinkler.
Gold-plated sprinkler? Sure.
Great.
And then the day of day deals?
Oh, and then, yeah, how do we do the electric?
I think you have to figure out in terms of what they're, what they're using for electricity and stuff like that, so...
Right.
They've been in there since last year for electricity. They haven't been through heating season yet.
Yeah. As I said, the last year was three hundred and twenty-nine dollars for electricity.
They're not, I wouldn't figure the heat's gonna be that big a deal, because it's gonna be set the same as last year. It's not like you're...
Right, they told me they weren't open when they needed heat.
It's not like you're open when you have to heat it.
But they were hoping to become open when they need heat.
We're not, they're not there yet. I don't think they're there yet. I think, and I think if they decide to change that, they need to come talk to us very soon.
Because they're open from April to November, and that's it.
So are we maintaining the cost that we have to spend anyway just to keep the building, and then they're gonna help if that use of the building changes?
Well, I, I think we should charge them for electricity.
Yeah.
Some particular amount that you two can decide.
Because if they weren't in there, we wouldn't need the building, so...
Well, we still...
So do something.
It's all right.
Well, the biggest thing is you have a little bit of heat for that building, but now pretty much every bit of heat up there is library heat.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're not paying it that way.
Yeah, they're paying a fixed amount of two thousand six hundred and seventy...
To reevaluate that.
Reevaluate it. Because it's also the library that's not using the town hall, so...
Right, so can we look at the square footage again? I think that's a great way to do it. I have no problem with that, but can we, I mean, if they're gonna continue to use the town hall, then they get that square footage.
Yeah, yeah. And then the annex can start...
Or they can not use the town hall.
That's fine, dude.
You all set? Do you have what you need, Steve?
I think so.
Okay, with regard to the, and I know that legal in the town hall, anything other than the town hall can be dangerous, but I did put Old Town Hall. With regard to the sign, I think we, we need to remove the side sign for add signage, and we also need to permanently cover the mail slot on the town hall.
People are sticking mail in there?
Kristin, particularly summer residents that are coming up and aren't here very long, are putting their tax payments. Kristin brought a handful of envelopes. She, she opens the box every month or two, and every month or two, there's some dog registrations and some tax returns.
Let's close that up. And then maybe put a sign on it that where the new one is, just for the new people?
There is a, there is a sign right over the mail slot that says, do not deposit anything here.
Okay.
And they're still putting stuff in there.
Do you believe the mail slot there at all, like, does that need to be removed?
I was going to just board it up myself, but it was a little more complex, and I realized there's a metal receptacle on the backside, so you can't just open the door and put a piece of wood over it.
Isn't that not very heat friendly? Like, isn't that just a...
It's a closed box that you have to open, but, so I think we definitely need to cover the mail slot, and I think it would help if we took that, and I, maybe you want to leave it for historical reasons and add another sign that says this is not the town hall, but we have FedEx guys calling us from the town hall wanting to know why the door's locked and no one's here. As well as any number of people that they call the town office, want to know where...
Well, you could people are, take the, you take the sign down, just to store it.
Yes, we've definitely stored it.
But isn't there a sign on, there's a sign on the annex too that says, BCB is not here, blah, blah, blah. Do we have a sign like that on the town hall?
I think it's on the door.
But they just can't see.
There's just a paper sign on the door, and there's a sign right above the mail slot.
What happens when you Google it on the directions?
When you Google Lee...
Permanently closed is what Google says.
It takes you, it doesn't take you to town offices at all. It takes you to Lee Town, the Lee Town Hall and says it's permanently closed.
I tried to get Google to change it.
So if we change the name from Town Hall to like Community Center or something, that would totally stop confusing people.
No.
No, no.
In Deerfield, we, we have the same situation. We call it the Town Hall, the Historic Town Hall, which helps a little bit.
Historic sounds nice, better than old.
How about we do the mail slot and take out the sign and see how that goes?
Okay.
Steve?
Yeah.
Steve just said, sorry, give me more work ethic.
Restore the sign someplace, because...
Historical.
Put it in the, the front building of the annex. There's a bunch of signs in there.
Great, okay.
The Bill's old office.
Yep, that's fine. All right. Right. And did, I brought this, but these here, has he put those? I haven't noticed the one on twenty-five yet, but...
Oh, man.
Oh, is this you?
No, I found out about that Friday when I got back looking, because I already signed something and got someone to make signs.
I know.
Do they look different?
No, they're gonna be hand painted on metal like the ones that were currently there.
Does that sign, what picture in that sign mean? I don't even know.
The what?
That's what picture this...
Those, those signs, there's one on each end of one fifty-five, and there's one at the end of George Bass Road. And they're old metal painted signs that Mr. Mills did.
Right.
Along with a bunch of the ones in the transfer station all need to get repainted, including the chemist's that signed when you drive in that's falling apart.
What's that symbol in the middle of this sign?
I have no idea what that is, but the person I was gonna get to paint them does pinstriping and paints construction companies' emblems on all their dump trucks.
The, the chief got these for free?
I don't, so I just found that out this morning.
So can we cancel the other one?
I was, already did.
Okay, all right. So has he given you these yet, or?
No.
Okay.
No, we did, Denise had the email from Order Imaging that they would do the three signs to that.
Tom's working on that.
Okay.
Can we ask the historical society? I don't know what that symbol is in the middle of that sign?
Looks like a scroll or a scroll.
To be honest with you, I think it's something that Mr. Mills just liked to do.
I think it's just a...
It's just a design.
Like, it looks like a butter churn or a stamp or something.
Oh, I thought it was just like a...
Or something that you'd swat somebody with your head with.
It looks like the end of like a frying post.
I'm just very aware of signs.
A finial, looks like a finial.
Yeah. Some mysteries will not be solved.
I just, before you place a symbol everywhere, let's make sure...
So the other thing about those signs. I'd gotten permission from the state of New Hampshire to put the VFW signs up. So instead of, and I, they just told me to stick them on a town, on a staver what I wanted coming in and out of town. Just, because I got a relationship with them, so they just told me to do them. But it'd be a lot easier if we just put those VFW maintain signs for the area on the two one fifty-five Lee signs that we have just below them.
If you think that's best.
Sure.
They're already crash rated with the two-by-four posts or the four-by-four posts that are there. They don't have to pound in any, any posts. It'd just be easier.
That makes the people that represent happy, then that's pretty...
And just touch base with Scott Maro and just let him know where you put them.
Because he was the one that said...
Oh, oh, there you are.
He said something to me earlier today about it, so...
As long as he's happy, that's good.
Because I just asked the signs already, they're in the office, so...
Just as long as Scott's happy, because that's my whole goal there.
He's wearing a Lee shirt. You can't even correct that.
It was on the top of the stack.
It's my daughter's entire wardrobe, so...
Moving on, I note you had some discussion about Facebook and working with Jess in the police department, which I'll happily do, but I, I do think there's some value to rank, keeping some autonomy to the town website. I understand that it doesn't get the attention that the police department does, and I think for a number of reasons. No matter how pretty we make the town website, it is not going to get the attention that the police department Facebook page gets just by virtue of what the police department posts. We posted about accidents and criminals and that sort of thing, and I can start doing that.
Do you think that there, do you find that too much of your time is spent trying to deal with that or manage that, or is it...
Yeah, not at all, and I, I can put more time into it. In fact, because Denise had explained the concerns to me, I put the IT committee ad up and tried to jazz that up with an...
That got some great...
We still, and we actually got two people that called about being on the IT committee, and one forwarded a resume. We had three people call, and at least one has already forwarded the paperwork, and so I think I've five shares so much like so.
So Andy got the hint. I like it, said, you're gonna up your Facebook game.
And I'm definitely, I'm definitely going to work with Jess on things, because Jess enjoys doing that, and has a...
Just a player.
Yeah, but you can be in charge. I think the, the goal was to figure out who would like to add a little bit of effort into increasing...
The only other person that's been on the site with me is Karen, and Karen's primarily on there for Parks and Rec. I did post the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would, that given the Red Sox dismal performance, this might be a better entertainment alternative for Lee residents.
I didn't understand what it meant, but I did see the words.
You didn't see them lose twenty-eight to five.
Got it. Do you think that instead of having it be a click, like we have to do when the reason people don't open on their email, that we could actually post the agenda is just in the agenda form, just so that, for people that don't like, or does that take away the...
I can do it as a PDF, but by, by posting it as a link, they can click on the clickables. If I post it as a, as a static PDF or a static photo, they won't be able to use the hyperlinks.
Could we post it as a static photo and then say, for the hyperlinks, and then have that underneath?
Sure.
I just think, so few people, like, I saw them, like, oh, I can click, you know, so like, just if we could have that, shh, and then.
And then it click on.
Yeah, and that might cause some, hey, I tried to click here, and then that will be a conversation. Well, you just do something, click, everything.
Nope, I can post agendas as pictures as opposed to things. I can.
Both.
Make them attractive colors.
I would appreciate that.
Are you familiar with the Bangor Maine duck of justice?
Oh, yes.
They have a Davis stuff duck that appears in all their town and police Facebook pages.
I feel like a bear would really be our, that's our most popular. It's turkeys.
I used to have a stuffed lion in my old office, but I'll see if anyone's got a bear.
Perfect, perfect. Steve's leaving because this conversation has gone down.
No.
Thanks, Steve.
I feel like we should build one, but we must not. We just have the listed, so.
Well, the turkey, you can find the turkey on the agenda and then you can get a point.
And I did not forget the how to correctly answer quiz, which will be showing up shortly as well.
Thank you.
You could. I think a good one would be if I find a dead animal on the side of the road, who do I film?
Well, they eat it very.
Depends whether, the most calls I get, and I'm sure Steve gets a lot of them too, involve state roads. People leave nasty messages on, or send nasty messages on the link to the town administrator. And I have to call them back and say, you need to call the shit in Durham.
So now we'll have that be a question, and then we can refer them to that.
Well, I did call the police department, and Jess said she was gonna take care of it, so.
Well, that's nice.
She was gonna call, she's like, well, it depends on where it is. And then she did a bunch of things, and I said, okay. She's like, we'll take care of it.
We have a, we have a deer list for deer, so if you've seen recently hit deer, use the list and folks will come pick them up.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I don't have that list.
You can get that list from the police department.
Well, I called Jess, I'm sure.
On the deer list?
Oh, no, I don't. Thank you, though.
Just, Ms. Layis has a Friday, the budget closing had a hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. So she has a few more bills that she's expecting to come in that would be charged to the fiscal year twenty-two. Looking back a year or two, it looks like you generally finish with over two hundred and fifty thousand, so this year is definitely tighter.
Okay. Is it not technical?
Along those same lines, I think there was a question about the audit process, and I had talked to Brian from Plazek and Sanderson, and he will be starting the audit process the third week of September. I believe it begins on the twenty-first. They'll be in the town offices for three or four days, going over things. I've distributed most of the questionnaires. I have a pre-audit packet that's done. I do have the selected board questionnaire that I'll get to. I know.
Oh, no, the survey?
Did we do this? No.
I'll leave that.
I have their questionnaire.
Okay, the audit survey?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we answered all the questions.
And the treasurer has his, the trust funds have theirs. And that was all I had. Other questions or concerns?
Yes, in terms of the budget you sent out, I have fifteen things I would like answers to.
Okay.
I'll make this quick. Under elections and registration, this shows that we didn't spend any money for the assistant, even though we had one. So where did her fee get expended from?
Okay.
Question number one. Question number two. Under financial administration, why are we over almost four thousand dollars from budget? I'm not sure where that come from. Also, under financial administration, new equipment, we're like fifty-two hundred dollars over. Why are we so far over on that one?
Okay, some of those I believe have already changed.
Okay, well, I'm just kept going by what you sent out. Steve can maybe answer this question, and I know it's probably because he's doing lots of stuff in terms of M and R, but in building, government buildings, we're almost fifty thousand dollars over.
Which makes sense. We did a lot.
In which line?
M and R.
Because every single air conditioner in this building broke five times.
Okay.
One of them I didn't fix until this fiscal year because I didn't have the money.
Okay.
So I was just trying to.
Get them caught up.
I wasn't even getting them caught up. It was to keep them running.
Alright.
Like, the very, the very first time I got the building, the heat pump downstairs was leaking all over the floor, and the boilers were shot, and that was a lot of money. And then, I think, two compressors broke, we fried like three circuit boards.
So in terms of the money that's in there, it sounds like for next year, or even this year, you're gonna need more money than what they budgeted, it sounds like.
We talked about that when we did the budget thing, and I said I wasn't sure what I hoped. But, you know, I might not have to fix every air conditioner in here this year.
That's what's been prepared.
But the other thing, but we also, we also fixed the air conditioners at the daily building a couple times. And then they were broken so bad at one point, they ended up paying to fix them. But we had three or four emergency calls to the new building that we had to do. The library furnace, we had like a bunch of emergency calls too before we finally got that heat exchanger fixed. And then, the other thing that's in there is there's a bunch of money in there, probably three or four grand for my building when the furnace blew up and we broke all the water lines that we, I don't think we've gotten reimbursed from the insurance company for. Because it comes out of my line, and then it would just go right back into the general fund.
Alright, the next one I have is the daily rent. Are we like three months behind on payment? There's fifteen thousand dollars still sitting there.
And that should be.
I don't see that.
Happily correct.
Nope, you're, you're good, Steve. You're good.
I've never seen that.
Yeah.
That written on the phone.
Are they just gonna cash the check maybe?
I don't know. Well.
That could be the chills.
No, but it would still.
It would still be.
It's still the chill, so that's. Under government buildings, Steve doesn't have to get up. Elect for the old town hall is over by eighteen hundred dollars. Why is that?
He's giving up any.
No, he doesn't have to get up.
I might just stand up here.
He's giving you a chair.
Same thing with the heat for the old town hall.
So I put it under there because, I kept putting it under there because there's no line for daily building. So I was just putting it under the, I just kept every heat I would get for the daily building or electric. I just put it under the town hall because there was zero, there was no place to take it out of. Like, I didn't have a line that suggested it anywhere.
Is that the same thing with the town hall heat?
Yeah.
Okay. Just things we're gonna need to know when we go is look at the budget for next year.
So there's a line for all of those things now, though, in the new, in the budget we're currently, we just got into, that I added.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, I got a couple more. I don't know if this is where the your section, hold on. So property insurance, there's still eleven thousand sitting there. I thought we paid that bill. But maybe not. All of it.
Find out why Joey had that.
Yep. This one, I think, this is from last year, I think, in terms of the COVID, isn't it? The hazard pay in the EOC is forty-one thousand. We got revenue to cover that, right?
Yes.
So that's kind of like a in and out kind of thing. Okay.
That's off, off books, right?
Joanne needed a place to put it.
Yeah.
And some of these corrections, I can send you pretty quickly.
That's fine.
I sent the budget to actual on Wednesday, and Joanne did a lot of work Thursday and Friday and gave me that one eighty-two figure on Friday.
The, oh, excuse me, back there again. There's a balance of twenty-five thousand in highway. I assume there's more bills coming in, or?
No, I stopped spending money to try to cover for what my overages would be for the funded salary increases that you guys gave out, so I was trying not to go over.
Okay.
There's like, there's a couple that are gonna come out. I wanted to encumber all my gas, all my diesel, and that little bit of asphalt. But essentially, we've stopped. We stopped spending money like a month ago. Tried to, so we didn't go over.
Is there anything you're not spending money on that you need?
Yes.
Well, so I knew I was way over on maintenance and renovation that he asked about, so I was trying just not to spend, hoping that if you took all four of my budgets, I was not under, I was not over.
So with this disposal, you've got a balance of twenty-eight thousand, but seventeen thousand is in hauling. And that's because of the truck? You didn't, you tell you.
Yeah, that was the, that was the leftover, and then we done pretty good, I think.
Yeah.
With lease diversion and stuff.
Thank you. Okay, this is it. You can sit down. No more for you. In a pan, pat, no, pat, pan, pan, really good, because we've spent nothing in general assistance?
It's amazing.
Nothing.
Joanne and I were just talking about how we didn't pay anything for rent in twenty-two, because we just got one in for rent right now.
There's so much funding in twenty, yeah, that isn't there anymore.
And she was like, we didn't pay one in twenty-two, so.
The only major financial transaction we've had regarding general assistance was actually the late that we collected, it was a couple of thousand dollars.
I think a large portion of that is because there is so much extra funding during the pandemic.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
She's very good at exhausting all.
I know she's good, but.
Before she gets to town.
Really good.
As long as everyone's getting what needs to make, that's important.
Parks and Rec electricity, we budgeted fifteen hundred, but we've only spent two seventy. Why is that? Because I thought we had like a meter rate and everything, and I'm not sure. Last one.
Steve has.
Oh, no.
I was paying that bill too, and I didn't know there was a park and rec electric line, so it was coming out of Little River Park maintenance out of the highway department.
Oh, okay, alright, so don't do that anymore.
Tell me more. I'm sorry. I just know you didn't know that.
I figured it out like.
Too late.
A month ago. I saw the budget to actual. So I looked, there's an electric line for parks and rec.
Oh.
But that's now been moved under the government buildings one two, so.
Thank you.
The last one I have, it looks like we budgeted seven thousand on conservation, but we haven't expended anything. We usually kind of check to them like first part of the fiscal year. Did we not send them any, send them any money in fiscal twenty-two?
Did we pay for all the things with the, our funding and then that tourism?
No, this is their, their annual ask that they just get transferred to their account.
Oh, okay.
I will find out.
That's my thirteen.
Thank you. Very thorough, Doris.
And I think one of the big expenses in the financial administration budget that cropped up was fairly early on when I got here, was supplying the town employees with separate cell phones.
Yeah, there was some savings there. There's also savings in the health insurance. I don't know if she's got all the bills in there.
There wasn't a savings there. We spent, we spent a considerable amount of money to add the cell phones for.
You know what I mean, the health insurance?
Oh, yeah.
There was like, what is it, eighty, ten thousand?
Yeah, cell phone service, that's more.
Yeah, cell phone service.
As I recall, getting everyone on contract talent.
Someplace here.
But I will get specific answers for all those.
Going forward, I won't continue that one because they're up.
No, we, we purchased them. They're on the land. It wasn't, it wasn't a big purchase fee, but I would tie them, so.
If you can check with Joanne as well in terms of the personal health insurance, it's showing the balance is sixty-three thousand.
Yeah, that, that has changed, I know.
Okay, alright, so, but at some point, you'll send us an update in one of these so we can see. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Joanne is preparing one for, there were a number of things. We had like our municipal association dues were under my training line and a few other things. I was trying to figure out how Denise and I had spent seventy-five hundred dollars on training. We've been to one meeting, but.
Expensive travel, I think. Alright, anything else on the regular business? No? Consent agenda? I do have something. I'll move the question, so move to accept consent agenda is presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion wise, I have a question about, there seemed to be, I think there was two, maybe three, where we did not get notified that the owner has changed, so now we have to reimburse them plus interest. That cost the town money. So what is going on or not going on? So why aren't we getting those particular pieces of information?
Camper or transfer.
No, it was a property. It was a transfer of property. You've got these sheets there at some point, so.
Well, it could have been just off the top of my head thinking because we were without Mr. Marsh for many months because of his medical. So there were some transfer of properties that didn't happen in his absence.
So nobody from MRI was coming to, so, but we still pay them.
We had someone here, but they didn't give the transfers.
If we miss, if we're missing actual property, which I know we are one or two here, I'm going to say that it was during Scott's absence, which was significant, and we had some bumps through that. The other ones have primarily been campgrounds and trailers, and we, some of them we've deep fixed and not brought forward and just said, too bad. You haven't provided proof that you sold the property, you, you know, didn't file with the registry. We're not interested in considering your payment, but.
Yeah, I wasn't after those. I was after the other two, because there, I think there's almost five thousand dollars, so. And the thing is, we need to reimburse them plus the interest, and that's significant in terms of, you know, because it's not just one or two percent, it's like eight.
But then a supplemental bill is sent out. Where's the interest, though?
No, I understand.
No, you're right. You're right. You're right. I just didn't want anyone to think that we were. No, at least, no, and that's listed here, but I mean, you're talking about Mill Pond Road and West Mill Pond Road.
I don't know what the others.
E. Colane, I'm looking at it right now.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, there's like, there's like, there's like four of them here that you have to give people back their interest.
Yeah.
Yes.
So hopefully, well, I guess my issue is if we hire MRI to do this and they send somebody else because Scott was sick, that person should be doing that particular part of the job as well, not just whatever, so.
We, I am in agreement. Denise is in agreement, and both of us have been rather direct with MRI about what happened in the absence.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Are they reimbursing us for this? I guess that's my question. Are they?
They are not reimbursing us. They have not. There was some discussion about, their contract allowed them to increase our contractual rate by a rather large amount based on rates of inflation and cost of living. And I had a pretty direct conversation with Christian Piersaw at MRI about why I didn't think that should happen, and it has not happened.
Okay, fair enough.
And part of that conversation was.
Did it go well?
Yeah, discussed the, the couple of months that we had with Scott gone.
Okay, thank you, Andy. That's great. I guess I have a motion on the table for the consent agenda. All those who pay will say aye. Motion passes. Old business?
Do you want us to start signing?
It was a question that was.
Yeah, I think we have to sign these papers.
Couple of small ones.
Thanks, Mark.
Did he give any on the bad ones?
I'm just, I'm giving.
Oh, you're allocating?
One third of the holders.
I see. You're allocating, you're triaging. Triage.
So we're talking about our pre-ambulation, or did that, you know, before this draft?
I wrote the statute still listed, but originally you were supposed to take a hammer and a chisel and you would input the initials of the select lawyer that you found each.
Should we do that?
Now, please.
I have my some straight lines for my, you got my big ones?
Maybe, yes.
Yes, taken.
Okay.
Oh, right?
Denise, you're making me nervous since we're just select, have had the link, signing in that order. Alright.
The investment policy, that Mr. Jeans is not signed, initialled, so.
Yeah, he's gonna initial, they're signatures that are gonna be at the top for those people.
He's supposed to initial this before we sign it, though. It's what he's, I'm not signing this until I know what he's transferring to them. Because he's supposed to initial these things and we acknowledge that that's what he's transferring, he's got, done his.
Yes, I was wondering.
I didn't see it with Scott.
I guess, I noticed that as well, I was interested, just, is he doing all of those things or?
Can he sign it and just have Scott sign it after? That way you don't have to wait for all of us to sign it, does that work?
You can wait till the next meeting, there's no.
Yeah, I'm, it's alright.
I don't think we have gotten to the signs yet, but I feel we're, we're.
Just a little reading.
Alright, so we're not signing this, we're like on signing streak.
Yep.
Oh, you can sign if you want, I'm not signing.
No, I, no, I have this one, I'm sure, I'm sure.
I don't like signing forms where the thing is not filled out.
That's fair.
Oh, um, I don't think the next meeting is, is check show manifest.
When is it usually coming?
Uh, Friday.
Yeah, usually it's wrapped up by Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, it's Friday, the Friday, August fifth, yes.
Just in the form of twelve-thirty.
Alright, how about ten a.m.?
That's probably like a.
Friday the fifth, yeah, alright, it's in my calendar, yay.
This one was exciting, it's the two years.
Don't have a hard time, you see the check for almost two million dollars.
I think if I sign it, it's already been asked, it's a, it's a, it's a line. That was the very large holder tax. I believe I passed first.
Old business?
I had notes on replacing the town police lines, basically the police chief was able to secure three free signs from motor imaging and that the DPW director had also been working on getting hand-painted signs. Did you handle that? Pavilion fee agreement, I included the updated pavilion agreement that I had put together with the corrections that Denise had brought from the meeting on the eighteenth or eleventh, actually. The note board wanted further changes, I would say the only concern that my office has, and that being Denise, who's the person who schedules these people, is, you know, hanging on to deposits and how to handle that.
I really don't know if that's the right.
We did look at, Karen and I looked at the Parks and Rec Civic Plus rec software, our thought was that it's probably too expensive to implement, that has a very nice feature that allows you to take deposits and credit them back via ACH or credit card, whoever you're doing it, they wanted eight thousand dollars for the first year to implement it and six thousand dollars for the ensuing three years of a four-year contract, and Karen and I informed them that we had not budgeted anywhere near that, so.
I would say if you can get the check from them, just hold on to it, and then when they return it.
The policy will have to be checks.
Just really positive, yeah. Yeah, I know, I'm.
Well, then they can't rent it.
Do you have, do you have a good suggestion that we should think about? Or just start to clean, we can get a paycheck, right?
Yeah, you know, a check, I just don't want to take cash, that's, that's not a good job.
I guess I didn't know that was not the.
Because you don't keep.
I take care.
You don't keep it there, though.
Right, to give back, yeah.
She kind of remembered it, though.
We'd have to give it to Joanne and then.
I'd have to, maybe I'd take it.
Then how do you get it back?
How do you get it?
She doesn't keep cash. She'd have to cut us a check.
We'd have to keep it in a locked place that we keep the checks, I think we just, I, I don't think asking people for a check is a hard thing to do.
I think we can move forward, ask people for a check, and if, if the community revolts, they'll come see you and change our policy.
If somebody doesn't have a check, can they give you a twenty-five dollars if it's a payment and then you can void the payment or return the payment somehow?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if they don't do a check, they're gonna do cash, unless they do, we don't take.
We don't have any way to take credit or debit cards.
Are you working on that, I hope you're working on that.
Well, one of the things I was working on was that, that Civic rec software would give us the ability to add any number of items in there that we could accept credit cards and debit cards for, but they were the, and we looked at an alternative one that Matt Glode had recommended, and we spent about five minutes with them before we told them that we had turned down Civic Plus because of the eight thousand dollar startup fee, they laughed and said, well, you won't want to talk to us then, have a nice day.
I'd say you ask them for a check and then we'll go from there.
Can you let us know if this becomes challenging or cumbersome or people are complaining, so that we can be flexible as.
I will let you know, because Denise will let me know.
Perfect, yeah, because I, I think it's one thing to make a rule, but it's another thing to make the rule make it harder for you, so.
And you don't get tons of easy ones anyway, right?
We actually, this year.
Three in one, eight in one days?
Three in one day?
Oh, yeah, this is really tough.
That's the other, the other flip side of this is how we're going to handle the inspections of who has cleaned up and who has not, like she mentioned, we had three in one day, these weekends are the busiest days, and if we're going to base returning people's deposits, make that contingent on how they left the facility, we're going to need an employee to, you know, run over on Saturday at eleven and make sure the children's group didn't leave the mess, run over at two o'clock or three o'clock and make sure the midday picnic didn't leave the mess, and run over in the evening to make sure that the last birthday party staff didn't leave the mess.
Who is going to do that?
Well, that's.
So, one of the things we could think about, instead of doing it this way, is we could say there's a twenty-five dollar cleanup fee and we could have contract out that cleanup to somebody who's looking for.
Make it not, not available, like you just pay a cleanup fee.
Right, like, yeah, I mean, you know, if it's, if it's more than, if you make a huge mess or destroy property, we'll find you, of course, but just, that's a cleanup fee, and we'll go around and take care of the trash.
Several towns in the area have a cleanup fee, but it's more oriented towards building rental towns that have, you know, that rent the town hall and that sort of thing have a mandatory cleaning fee, I haven't seen it for the fields, but.
Oh, but it's not nice for living.
If I'm renting it and I'm a pain in the, you know what, I'm gonna trash the place and you're gonna clean up that, I don't really care, I don't want to get into that in the middle, so.
I mean, you could trash the place and pay twenty-five dollars now.
Yeah, well, but I'm gonna try to clean up, because I want my twenty-five dollars back.
We've got some language in there, I think, that says you could go after them if they do see there's been damage, but.
Yes, who's going to be doing this, checking in on every?
I'm not talking about damage, I'm talking about not picking up, like.
Like, if it's not a refundable cleanup fee, then you'll just leave your mess.
Yeah, I'll just leave my mess there and I don't care, because.
Or you pay for a cleanup?
Yeah.
Then we'll pay someone to clean up and you only have so much mess, how much mess can you make?
But then still somebody has to go down there and say, oh, no, party number one of the day didn't clean up, so I have to clean it up, because then the second party comes in and then trash will look place, they're gonna complain as well.
Yeah, and the, and the time is somewhat of the essence, because the trash here almost always involves food and, you know, you can't, critters leave it for the evening because of the critters. We're happy to spread it all over the whole field.
See a good solution out of this, because I think we all have different.
We'll just close the place and nobody can go in.
No, I just want to say why we, it has to be a way to find a solution.
I mean, right now it's calm down and it's mostly just one group a day, but May and June were busy, and there was a few days where we had back-to-back groups.
Do you think that this charge is gonna help with that? I'm sorry? A lot of them were out of town, you said before, do you think having this charge will finally start to slow that down too as well?
Maybe, but I think that people.
Okay.
They're, you know, they were, they were happy they didn't have to pay a charge.
Right.
Pay a fee to use it, but, but mostly, you know, these, most of it was Lee people.
Okay.
I mean, there were, you know, here and there, there were people from out of town like Dover.
So, how about if we try this for six months or so, and then just, let's come back and revisit it, if Denise says, no more, I'm done, you know, maybe we can.
Well, I guess I just have to know that Steve's people are gonna report back to me after they go to clean, go to check it, clean it, what, like.
So we'll not get there.
The idea was that like on Saturday, someone from the transfer station that's already working is supposed to go down there and keep an eye on it.
But if it's dirty, then we keep their check.
Right, and if they report, not, they don't have to report back to me on Saturday, I don't need to get a call on Saturday, but just come Monday, anything bad to report, was there a group, you know, at any time, which group?
Which shift, yeah.
Which? Hello?
What do you think, Steve? Do you think we need to pass?
I mean, you do complain, when someone is, when, I mean, something's bad, you call me up and you tell me and I narrow it down to the group and then I, and then I call the group up and, or, you know, so we kind of have that going now, but now it's gonna have to, we're gonna really have to hone in on it, because I gotta return money.
Yeah. I don't think I should, I don't think you should return the money, because they gotta go down there and take the trash out.
Yeah, that's for me, that's the thing, if we're gonna.
Maybe Saturday, Saturday might not be, no, they don't, none of them take their trash with them.
No?
No.
I just feel like.
Well, there's a trash they do.
Because you put, because you put trash cans there, there shouldn't be any trash cans there, it's carry and carry out.
So, so take out your, the whole deposit part and just say, this is a cleanup fee, we sent somebody down, they know that they're gonna do it.
Because it, it might be fine on Saturday when the transfer station's there, but if they leave at six at night, or seven-thirty, because it starts till dawn, transfer station's closed, so we go after they're gone, get the trash, bring it to the transfer station, so the raccoons don't put it all over the place, but then we still have to go down Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah.
So we still gotta pay someone on the Sunday.
Why not?
You know, it.
Unfortunately, we're not talking about the paying part of the people, we're just trying to narrow down when we.
Well, that, but that's. But he's saying that they're gonna all need to pay, because none of them are bringing trash out.
That's the way we've been, that's, they've been doing it now.
And now, what, what are my feelings if we ever did that?
If we just asked for the twenty-five dollars for cleanup fee?
No, it was closed after.
Oh.
Let's put big caution paper on it, make it no more.
I, I just, I, yeah, I feel like it's a reasonable, if I, if I want to have a party and it's just for me at a town thing and I, and I know that I'm gonna be leaving bags of trash or whatever.
Well, it's because we have trash cans there, we, because it's not even, you will go down there on the week and there's household trash bags inside the trash cans that people have put.
Aye, aye. But if we don't put trash cans there, we're just gonna have a mess, so I don't.
It was always designated to be carry and carry out, that were never supposed to be trash cans there.
Why did we put them there?
Because Julie wanted them there.
So, it wasn't because they were trash?
Because trash will just get left, like, bags of dog poop will just be left there.
They leave them there anyway with trash cans there.
They don't put them in the trash can?
No, they leave them on the ground. I picked up human diapers next to the porta potty down there, it's not like.
Have they just put them in the porta potty?
No, they leave them on the ground next to it.
Okay, who are these people?
They've tried to light the porta potty on fire this year, they.
Don't give anyone any more ideas, it's been a bad year for porta bodies, it's really been bad.
Would you prefer there not be trash cans there?
I, I would.
Would you like to go to the park and not be able to throw away your trash?
I think I, you go to most parks, you can't throw your trash, you put it back in your car.
Because it's more than just that, moral, what hay leaves, their garbage there all the time, and last year, I told the middle school that they weren't allowed to use the park anymore if they didn't send the coaches down there to pick up all the bottles.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't doing it, I got sick and tired of spending an hour and a half before we mowed it, picking up water bottles, and they wouldn't clean them, but it's.
It just seems like a lot of extra work, and if we're just gonna, this is a way, like, if we have this twenty-five dollar deposit and this fee, then that pays for all this work we're having, but.
Just remember that how this thing is structured, because if you're an elite resident, there's no charge and there's a twenty-five dollar refund deposit, if you're not an elite resident, or you're a domestic business, you're gonna get charged fifty dollars, or a non-residence fifty dollars and two-hundred-and-fifty if you're a business, so that's where we're getting money for those particular people. Elite residents aren't, at least in my eyes, are getting charged because they're already supporting the, the function.
Right, you're still getting money. You're still getting money.
You're either gonna get money or you're gonna drive people away.
I just want to make sure, making sure that they're, yeah, that.
It's, I'm never, I don't see the money anyway, it would just go right into the general fund, so it's not money.
No, it's going into the rec.
Goes in the rec department, that screen, yeah.
I still don't see it.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
You'll see to the fun events you get to go to.
Oh, yeah, hopefully. Because it's a park, it goes into, it's not a, it's not a revolving fund, it's a trust.
Shouldn't they be paying for someone to clean it up? I'm just.
If it, if it fully becomes part of the rec department and.
Yeah, but it's in the rec department, probably.
But they get the money.
You know that rec person you keep talking about? This is one of those great moments, we could be really using them.
Okay.
I don't care, how they have a rec rope is fine.
Alright.
I'm fine with it, I just don't.
But you have people that.
That park is a lot of work.
Yes.
And it takes a lot of time.
Thank you for all the effort.
In the past three years, it's just gotten worse and it's gotten to the point where we have to go down there every single day during the weekend.
Right, and empty the trash.
Yep, I only do it on this past weekend, or Saturday, turn the power on. It's one thing when you have like Pete and Warren in town who don't really complain that much about it, because they're driving by it anyway, so Pete just looks, says, well, I gotta drive by it, but it's his time still.
But we paying for that?
He never was putting in for it, he started writing in his time for it, because he would refuse to put in for it.
Is turning on the power something that the police department can do, because they do drive by it anyway?
I don't know, it's, that's just more coordination, she emails me the schedule and I know what the schedule is.
Okay. I'm just thinking, you're, you're stuck, like if.
Just gets more people involved and then if something doesn't get done.
Right.
Like, oh, you said the fire department could go do it, right? But if he's out, if he's out on multiple calls and he can't go turn the power on and then you're gonna have an angry person just pay money for power and then, and you can't expect them to not answer the toll and to go try.
With the electric, it was more like an all-day thing, so you had many hours, but that's fine.
But, you know, you can't have them, police over fire to the trash, because then really don't put it.
It was just the electric, because you turn on for the day, that's all, that's fine.
But we can't have so many hands in the park.
Nope, that's fine, I guess.
It's easier this way?
That's fine.
I'm expecting to plug in an electric car in.
I don't know, I just, it's a lot of work, and it's just getting busier, 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 busier.
Just have your people coordinate with me, that's all.
We already did a pretty good job of it, I thought.
Well, no, but the, the cleaning is gonna have to be.
I know.
Alright, are we instituting these changes?
Let's try it.
We're gonna give a, keep on, let's try it.
Okay, do you need to vote for this? It's a policy, so. So I move to approve the Randy Stevens Pavilion Rental and Usage Agreement, dated. Well, it's not dated.
In this current, under our agenda.
As presented.
As presented, go to second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those, oh, okay, so the passage, I'm aye, mostly passes.
Can we revisit, though, the trash can thing, like?
Yep.
Next spring, because if it is carry and carry out, I don't know why there's trash cans either, I don't think it's a good time to change it now.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Next.
Our update, I have slipped together a more complete, more exact and simpler to, Denise, I thought, simpler to review power of funding, the heart of the matter is the center part there, which were the approved projects, whether they've been completed or not, whether they were started or not, what we've expended, and then in the lower part of the page, I listed some projects that were not part of the FPT meeting with the chalkboard and the camera, but that we sort of added on as we went along.
As far as I can figure out, we have still, there's the amount that's been expended. As far as I can figure out, we have still, there's, the amount that's been expended, there's 83,000 left, but it looks like there's $40,605 still uncovered with projects that are not completed.
The fire pump, there's more, yeah.
The left?
There's more.
There's the fire pump at 54.
That is what I built.
Where's the fire pump?
It's the one that's highlighted in like yellow.
That's actually the insulation.
Insulation, sorry.
Oh, it says completed.
No, it says no bill yet.
Oh, so that's not in there?
No.
No.
We have the sprinkle.
So, we're over expended by.
Do I have something?
James Harp's survey.
We're spending about like $14,000.
Oh, those two.
Yeah, so. That's not good. So.
But we should see the, I am anticipating receiving the award letter for the second round of the offer funding at the end of this week.
Mr. Tappin, you have this, right? All right, so we just have to be aware of that.
Part of the next offer.
Yeah, it's already been committed. All right. Thank you, Ms. Andy.
With regard to the New Hampshire Municipal Association Positions and Principles, we did not hear back from any of the department heads with concerns. And Denise followed up my email with a secondary recent email, making sure that no one had concerns and no one did. I say concerns, but had nothing to add or recommend beyond that either. In regard to electrical upgrade at the transfer station and revision solar contract, for lack of a better reason, vacations have essentially slowed both these processes. I did talk to Christian at PES, who's getting us the electrical contract. He wants one more look at the equipment in the transfer station. And I don't know if he's contacted you yet or not, Steve, but he told me he would contact Steve this week. I also gave him Chip Belier's contact information. So, if Steve was busy, he could meet with Chip. He thought that he could have the estimate for us this week. I talked to both our attorney, Joe Driscoll, and Rachel Eadies at Revision. They had hoped to have a contract to me in time for this meeting. Revision's, Revision's attorney, Michelle, has not responded yet on a couple of key items in the contract that we were pushing to have changed. Primary among those was the insistence that any payments made from the town to Revision would be made on a 10-day basis, which most municipalities have paid nothing ever close to 10 days.
Yeah.
Both Joe and I had asked for that to be pushed out to 30. And there were a couple of other small tweaks that they had initially agreed to. And Revision's attorney, Michelle, had told me she didn't think there would be a problem with 30 days, but she didn't supply the contract with 30 days in it before tonight's meeting, so.
So, on Thursday, can we go ahead and approve the contract and the schedule if we have that?
If we have it yesterday, if we get those, I'll bring them Thursday.
And what's this service, the electrical today, is it 480? What are we going to?
My understanding was that Steve was interested in going to 480 because of the potential load demand there.
Anything else?
I have nothing else under old business.
Anything under new business? Then none? Nope?
Okay. If you could go into non-public under A and L.
Oh, we have an L.
Yes, I think Mr. Bullock would like to talk with you first about the L.
I moved into nonpublic session, New Hampshire RSA 91-A colon 3, moving into the two sections, A and L, we have a second.
Second.
No discussion, I assume.
Nope.
Rule cover, Katrin Tasper, Rebecca Hawthorne.
Yes.
Stop, but the yes, mostly passes.
Transfer station?
The transfer station.
Yes, I let a few of her dump comments go, just.
Oh, my goodness. It's not a meme thing, it's that's.
It's a transfer station. We don't dump anything.
Yes.
Maybe at the transfer station, maybe.
Yep, I can circulate some of them.
The town hall.
I think I've got some last story.
Transfer station, do you think that comes?
Maybe the library?
I haven't checked, but I can verify that it's.
Well, the last time I was there, I think I mentioned it, so.
I had to fix it, yeah.
They have something wrong with it? Does it break down often or?
Yeah, we have.
Comes off, comes off, falls offline.
Hey, what happened to the, the digital sign thing we were gonna put out front? Did we ever?
No, no. I know, right? That just kind of, well. Remember Tom, the chief, I don't know, it kind of got derailed.
Well, it'd be nice to put a sign out front.
Okay.
That's, uh, cause I think you did a lot of work on that, so I don't want necessarily like say.
But then it, I don't know, was it too expensive or then? I was looking into, oh, was it too looking into, cause he was finding money or finding money somewhere else?
I was gonna say, we got a 3-1 in Deerfield from the state, something like a college, I'm asking the other guy.
Put that on old business or something like that. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm not sure, cause Andy, you haven't done one of our budget cycles yet. You kind of came in kind of in the middle. So, at some point this summer, you guys send out something to the nonprofits. So, you're, that's on your to-do list at some point. ABC is gonna get together sometime next month to set up their potential schedule.
Okay.
Which we'll share with you and then we'll, well, we'll share with the board, cause you guys have to be aware of it too. Or, what is the word, not aware of it, but agree to it as well. So, that stuff is moving forward. What was the other thing I was gonna say? Shoot, there was something else. What it is.
Okay.
It was something where Denise was talking.
Just along the lines of the health agencies, I did reach out to Jan Dean between the last meeting and next.
Well, the thing is, they're trying to make inroads into Lee because they're, they heavily support Newmarket and Durham and they support Oyster River. So, they're trying to get into Madbury. I gave them some contacts in Madbury. That's why you got, you know, the calls you got. They're also reaching out to the church as well.
Yep.
Cause one of the things they, I'm sorry.
Sorry, which group is this?
Oyster River Women's Aid.
Oh, okay.
And they also provide money to, I think it was last year, the food pantries in different towns, but they didn't do anything with Lee cause they didn't have a contact, so.
Oh, jeez.
I think we also didn't fund them.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
No, no, that has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with it.
That's what you were talking about.
No, 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 no. No, they understood. They understood that particular thing. But the thing is, they gave money to, I believe, Durham's and Newmarket's food pantries, but they didn't. So, they're reaching out to those other two towns.
I gave Jan my contact information. She's sending an information packet for the town. And I told her that she had asked about verifiers and.
Validators.
Validators, right. And I had, I've worked with Catamount Women's Aid, which is a couple of towns north of here in Deerfield. And I had given her Pam Mattingly's name. And Denise had told her that I'd be happy to make contact with her for the police department too, just thinking that. Denise runs into a lot of people come in looking for help.
And the thing is, the women's people, they do all the things that everybody else doesn't.
Right, they fill in the void.
You know, you just help some people. They're having family medical issues and they can't afford to fix their car and they have to go back and forth to work and they don't have any money.
Right.
So, that doesn't cover no federal program base for that, so.
But it stops the spiral, cause if you allow that to not happen, then that stops all the other things, so that's why it's a title.
I was surprised to see two old friend of mine, Hayden Chase's.
Oh, yes, yes.
You know Hayden Chase too?
Oh, my dear.
He's been 40 for that.
25 years.
Oh, really?
Wow.
And I was her insurance agent for a while.
Do you have true key papers, do you have?
Yeah, I really do.
My husband's.
I'm sorry.
Working hard for Nathan?
I'm on the board.
Yeah, when everyone was in the big happy place in Newmarket, I used to be their insurance agent.
The fair committee has asked them to run the bingo game this year, so we'll see. They haven't accepted, but we'll see.
Very exciting.
I believe they already have a gaming license, so they don't have to do that.
Oh, that's nice.
I've already got one person that's interested to assist me. And according to Tom and Karen, we need like two to three, so if I can get somebody else.
Simply bingo or to?
No, to run.
To run. Sorry, to help her. I meant to say, sorry, for the bingo game.
So, but yeah, so that's good. Cause you know, anything that we can help those particular people that are having a hard time, that's, you know, so.
Great.
And I still don't remember. Oh, yes, yes, I remember what it is. Did we get any people in terms of for the volunteer of the year? I know you had an e-crowd, but.
Yes, but do we want to talk about that now?
No, I just want to know if you got anybody.
We've had a number.
I've had a number of additional ones, so I need to talk about that.
That's good, that's good.
It's actually a little difficult.
I love the difficult, so many good volunteers.
The other thing is, and I think you guys mentioned it earlier, in terms of the IP committee, so you, how many people do we have?
We have Dean Rubin installed as a sole member. And we had three contacts after the, I was surprised how many people remembered off this space.
Yep, yep.
You went with the right one.
We had three contacts and we had one gentleman who submitted a rather expensive resume.
Correct.
A letter expressing his desire to be on the committee.
Great, I love it.
And the last one is the CFP committee.
The CFP committee is struggling. They have two.
Two? Well, who's the two?
Brian and Barbara, I mean, Pat Barber.
Pat Barber and Brian Sisnerus.
So, we need way more than that.
What cool meme can you post to get the?
That will be the next project.
I can't, maybe the outfits.
Cause they should start soon, like really soon.
I know Karen tried to push it at the last planning board meeting and got no pictures still.
Okay, all right.
Can we circle back to sealing the non-public thing?
Sorry, do we? Oh, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, but.
I motioned to seal the non-public motion.
Second.
All in favor? Discussion?
Nope.
No discussion. Go ahead.
All in favor, say hi.
Uh, go ahead.
Motion passes.
There you go.
Wow.
Hey, if we don't by tradition, you're in charge next, next year, so you need to do all these things. Yes, you have to be.
Got it.
And I've heard, heard you just, but you are trainable.
Oh, snap. Okay, then.
You guys thought it conspired to keep one person in chair for extended periods of time.
That's been done before.
Not only your world, no, here, you can pretty much have zero or great qualifications, whatever they are, it doesn't matter. It's the rule of.
The thing is, you've done this before. Being on the board is different than being the chair. It's a different job.
It takes your fungus.